Okay, we've got most everybody together.
Yeah, I did miss somebody.
No administrators, so straight to head start.
Okay. Item six, Head Start update, Mr. Buller?
Just three short items today. We are still getting underway. We had a wonderful first day back. So, we do have our quarterly in-kind, which I'll get to, but it's a pretty short liaison report this evening. Our three-year-old enrollment is 117. Our four-year-old enrollment for North Carolina Head Start is 143, for a total funded enrollment of 260. You can see a breakdown of our numbers. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Moving on to item number two, our Head Start monthly expenditure report for the month of September. And again, keep in mind, I reiterate, not so much for you, but for the people in the audience, that we are a month behind the school system calendar. We are green. The majority of our expenditures, as they usually are, are for salaries, but we expect to meet our numbers. We are right on track for where we need to be, thanks to the work of this wonderful team. Now, the in-kind contribution report takes a little bit to go through. It is a federal requirement that every quarter, we go ahead and share with you our in-kind contributions. Everybody up here should know, but if you don't. In-kind contributions are contributions of monetary value that have to be reported by federal law. So for this month, or for this quarter, rather, $81,421.82 was spent by New Hanover County Schools on payroll. $22,546.54 on the utilities. $2,025.93 on payroll, for a total first-quarter amount of $105,994.29 in-kind contributions. So, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, New Hanover County School System. Are there any questions on the liaison report for this month?
Enrollment's on track with last year.
Ms. Smiles? Enrollment is on track for last year. So, thank you.
Who attends this upcoming, I noticed, an upcoming governance training? Who is attending that training?
If I may, Madam Chairperson, program governance training, board members are welcome as well, and that's October the 29th at 5:30 at the Dell Spencer Board Room. So, we do it annually. We had ours in April, I think, this year for our new elected board members. So, anyone is welcome to join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With no questions, that concludes the liaison report. Thank you very much.
Item seven, information. Item A, policy for first reading. Ms. Jeanette Nichols.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have three policies for your consideration tonight. The first is the 5,400 naming of facilities, and I'm going to ask Mr. Buller if he will go through this revision with you.
Let me pull it up on my screen, Ms. Nichols. All right, thank you. The change to this one was to add the language that's underlined there, to make it clear that a facility cannot be named after someone who worked for the school system until they've been, gone from the school system for a year. Other than that, also, also, it can't be named for a current employee, but obviously, that would apply as well. So, if you're a current employee, or you've been an employee within the past year, the policy would say the board may not name a facility after that person. Otherwise, the provisions stay in place, which require a six-month waiting period from the board announcing the proposed name of a building or facility before it can be named after an individual.
And then note that it would take two board members to put it on the agenda for consideration. So, this is to ensure that, that when we name something, we want to make sure that everyone's had an opportunity to participate in the process. Any questions?
We're talking about a standalone facility. If a school is naming a gymnasium...
These would be individuals, gymnasium, ball fields, things like that. You, as a board, give a school its initial name. Now, we take public comment or input on those, and it's not a six-month wait like there is on another facility. But this is, we get a lot of requests to name particular gyms, ball fields, stadiums, and things like that. And so, this request just came in to make sure that if you wait a year, if you wait that one year, then I think the thought was that if that person is still that important to the school, it'll be, a year later, it won't make a difference.
But they still could be working there.
Correct.
Right.
And then the six-month period that's already in the policy is to allow comments once you decide, once you put a name out there.
That's a good idea. Okay, thank you, Dr. Markley. Any more questions, comments? Okay. The second policy for your consideration is 6431, drug testing, and I'll ask Dr. Wellmers to present it, and then Mr. Buller may follow up.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. This is a policy that is taking the place of an entire policy that we've rewritten. This concerns drug and alcohol policy for employees, which both defines the different types of employees that we're working with, which is much more inclusive than our previous policies, which mostly revolved around CDL folks with a certified driver's license. This policy describes folks as in safety-sensitive positions, and what we would do with folks that are in those positions, should they demonstrate or show any type of problems with possibly inebriation, or drug use, or anything like that. And it also talks about regular employees who might be working during the day in a school building, who aren't under a driver's license, or state control of a driver's license, and what we would do with those folks. So, it's a, it is a complex policy. It's taken quite a while to write this and to get it to where it needs to be. Mr. Buller has done, I think, a very, a yeoman's job of continuing to take every paragraph and take it apart, and, believe me, we have literally been through each one. So, I think, I think it's a strong policy now. Mr. Buller, would you like to, am I describing it in the right way?
Yes, Dr. Wellmers. What we try to do is provide for the safety of our students and staff by being able to detect and deal with situations where employees may be under the influence, or in possession of illegal substances at work, while also respecting their rights under the Constitution to be free from unreasonable searches, because when you require an employee to undertake a drug test, that is considered a search under the law. So, the situations in which this would allow you to require an employee to submit to a drug or alcohol test would be, first of all, if you have reasonable suspicion that they are under the influence, or in possession of illegal substances, or alcohol while at work. Also, if they are to get into an accident that is determined to be their fault, and they're in a safety-sensitive position, and it's a serious enough accident, you could require it in that case. And then, also, if you are in a safety-sensitive function, it provides for random drug testing, and those are people primarily involved in transporting students, which would be your bus drivers, and your bus mechanics, and people supervising the drivers and the mechanics. So, you, I think it does a good job of balancing the need for the testing, but also respecting the rights of public employees not to be subjected to unreasonable searches in the form of a required drug test. Does anybody have any questions?
Right now, employees who are hired are not subject to a drug test as time of hire, nor as a condition of their employment. So, how are we going to change the terms of their contract while they're in the midst of it?
Well, their contract doesn't prohibit drug testing, and so, they're being placed on notice by this policy, that is, the policy of the system, to undertake these tests. And if they're not comfortable with that, they're not required to remain employed with us.
And what would constitute reasonable suspicion or probable cause in these circumstances? Who would determine that?
Well, there are, there is training that is provided by HR to primarily principals and other administrators, to determine when they have reasonable suspicion, and it is based on information provided by the state. And it trains the individual to look for telltale signs, such as bloodshot eyes, slurred speech, smell of alcohol, erratic behavior, and things like that. And so, there is training that goes on, and we do follow the guidelines that are put out by the state of North Carolina Department of Labor on that.
And would the employees be subject to search before that training is completed by administration?
They should not be required to undergo a reasonable suspicion drug or alcohol test if the determination is not being made by a trained person, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And the third policy is the, I'm going to ask you to consider waiving first reading for policy 7440, which is student promotion, and Dr. Smith is going to tell you why we need to waive first reading.
Yes. With policy 7440, we're asking for two major changes. The first of which is to add some additional language related to career and technical education. We're asking that students who receive the credential, which are endorsed by businesses and industry standards, not be required to take the post-assessment. So, they would get credit for the course, but they would not have to take that post-assessment. That is allowable under state board policy, but has not, up until this point, been a part of our policy. So, we're asking that that information be added. And then the second major change we're asking is that the language around the requirement for graduation project be removed from the policy. Recently, the state of North Carolina made some changes to the law that would require districts to provide compensation to students who are required to complete the graduation project if those students qualified, or were qualified for free and reduced lunch, or were identified as students who were economically disadvantaged. So, we are removing the language that would require this as a graduation project. This law actually was signed, well, the bill was signed into law, actually, after the school year had started, so we did not make provisions for that. We are actually keeping the graduation project, but we're just removing the requirement that children completed for graduation. So, we will have students who will choose and have chosen to continue with this, but it is just simply not a requirement of graduation. So, we would ask a reading, a waiving of first reading for tonight, and approval as we have started the school year, and this does impact our students currently with us.
So, the students who are choosing not to take, or not to do graduation project, what is the choice for them?
So, the graduation project currently is embedded within English IV. So, essentially, you would be getting two credits with that class. They simply are taking English IV, or they, if they have room in their schedule, they can take another, another course.
But it started after the school year, so for those in there this semester...
So, many of those children are choosing to continue with the graduation project, because, you know, they're invested, they've found something of interest, they've identified their mentor. It is just not the, I guess, the additional burden of it being linked to their ability to graduate on time or not. So, we have had students elect. So, we've not removed that as an opportunity for them, we just have, just removed that additional weight that it's connected to graduation.
Okay. So, going forward, are we planning on changing anything for second semester?
So, second semester, we are, again, evaluating the students that are interested. We do have some students who need that one additional credit, and so, they are choosing graduation project, because it is embedded within that English IV. So, it's not an additional class, per se, that they take, additional responsibilities and standards they have to meet. But we are looking at revamping the courses, in a more likely than not be very specific to each high school, so there may be additional components of service learning. But within English IV, we're maintaining the research paper, and we're maintaining the public presentation. Although it may not be to the public at large, it may be to your peers, or something that's housed within the school.
Okay. Will those be brought forward to the board at a later date, those ideas?
Likely. We were not planning to do that. We surely can, but we were not planning to do that, just simply because it would be taking the existing course, the English IV course, and personalizing that, or it would be taking an existing course, such as service learning, and modifying that to add those additional components to it. So, typically, if those are, those tweaks of that nature are left to the discretion of the teacher, but if the board is interested in a formal report from each of the high schools, we surely could put that together.
I would like to hear it. I mean, graduation project has been such a big thing in this county for many, many years. I would like to know how it's going to change. I think our public would like to know, too, what's going to be happening at each of the high schools, just going forward. I know it's embedded, but, you know, we can choose to pull different strands of the curriculum down instead. So, if that's going to happen, I think it would be, it'd be interesting for everyone to know.
Yes, we will take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I need a motion to waive first reading, and a vote on the policy, please.
Second? I'll, motion to waive first reading. Okay, second then.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading is waived. So, then we need a motion to approve policy 7440, student promotion.
So, moved.
Second. I think there was a second, yeah.
I'm sorry.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nichols. Item B, 2018, 2019 Annual New Hanover County Schools Accountability Data Presentation, Appendix E. Dr. Smith?
Yes. Annually, our Accountability Department makes a presentation to the board regarding the previous year's outcome. I am pleased tonight to introduce you to our new director for Testing and Accountability, Dr. Elizabeth Murray, to bring this presentation and this year's report to you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share our data. This year is the second year of the Every Student Succeeds Act Accountability Model. And the accountability model takes into account two major pieces. The first piece is academic achievement, and that is largely reported through our end-of-grade test scores, and end-of-course test scores, in elementary and middle school, and then with some additional career and college readiness indicators in our high school. So, the achievement portion actually counts 80% of a school's performance grade. The additional 20% comes from growth, and growth is an indicator of the rate at which students progress throughout the school year. So, we are going to talk this evening about the academic indicators, the growth indicators, and then the school performance grades. The accountability measures for performance are the percentage of students who achieve, in North Carolina, what is considered proficient, is academic achievement levels three, four, and five. And I do want to pause here to share that this past year, the 1819 school year, was a year that North Carolina engaged in what's known as standard-setting. When we have a new curriculum, we have to have a new test associated with that curriculum. And in the 1819 school year, that was the end-of-grade test for mathematics, and the end-of-course test for NC Math 1 and NC Math 3. So, in the standard-setting process, teachers, legislatures, college professors, different stakeholders come together and decide what should be the cut, or the score, if you will, that demonstrates proficiency. As a part of that process this year, the state actually eliminated one of the achievement levels. So, instead of having five achievement levels, we now have four. We have kept levels three, level four, level five, and then the fourth level is actually now just called not proficient. So, previously, we had level one and level two, which were always considered not proficient. But this year, the state board went ahead and just combined those two levels, so we report four levels, being not proficient, level three, four, and five, and those top three levels are considered proficient. Yes.
Is that across the board?
It is.
Subject noted?
It will be beginning this year. So, just as math underwent the standard-setting process in the 1819 year, reading will undergo the standard-setting process in the 1920 school year, and while there are not plans currently for science to undergo the standard-setting process, the state board has let us know that the four-level academic achievement system will be consistent for math, reading, and science.
So, that'll begin this year?
It will.
Okay.
It will. So, the accountability measures for school performance grades do take into account the percentage of students that scored at achievement level three, four, and five, which in North Carolina is known as grade-level proficiency. There is another measure that the federal government reports, and it's called career and college readiness. And so, those metrics come from the percentage of students that score at achievement levels four and five. The second piece of the accountability system is the growth. And again, that's the indication at which students learn throughout the year, and growth is reported in three ways: either exceeding the growth expectation, meeting the growth expectation, or not meeting the growth expectation. And I'd just like to highlight here how important growth is. We often focus on the number of students who are proficient, but it is the growth that moves those non-proficient children towards proficiency, and it is the growth that allows students who are already achieving at a high level to continue to achieve. So, we really, while the state board and the legislature only counts the growth as 20%, we see growth as just a big piece of the data, and a piece that is often not highlighted. Elementary and middle school have the same accountability model, and the components for that are the end-of-grade test in math and English Language Arts in grades three through eight. The federal government requires that we report science in each grade span, so North Carolina reports science in grade five and grade eight. Any end-of-course assessments taken in middle school count towards the accountability model. Typically, that would be NC Math 1, taken by some eighth graders. And then the last component of the achievement is the progress that our English learners make on the access test. The access test is a test that our English learners take roughly in the month of February to gauge how they are acquiring the English language. So, those components, again, make up 80% of the school performance grade, and again, growth is the other 20%. We do want to point out that English Language Arts growth is counted in grades three through eight. Math is only counted in grades four through eight, and if you have children in the school district, you'll know that third graders take a beginning-of-grade-three test in reading, and that allows for that comparison of growth from the beginning of third grade to the end of third grade. Currently, North Carolina does not have a beginning-of-grade-three test for math, so math growth begins in fourth grade.
Is there a pre-test for the English learners?
There is. When a student is new to U.S. schools, they take a screener, and that screener actually lets us know where they are beginning in their English language acquisition, and from that screener, the students actually are set on a trajectory to exit the English language program, depending on where they start, within one to four years. And so, each year, they have a target, based on where they started with their screener. There's a target for where the language acquisition should be by the end of the school year, and that is how that growth and progress is measured.
This is the first year we're using that as an academic indicator?
High school has additional indicators. They have what's known as career and college readiness indicators, in addition to their end-of-course assessments. This past year, we had the addition of an end-of-course assessment with NC Math 3. So, now we're up to four. We have end-of-course assessments in English 2, Biology, Math 1, and Math 3. And then we have the additional indicators, one of which is the graduation rate. Math Course Rigor is the percentage of students who successfully complete North Carolina Math 3. North Carolina has a graduation requirement that all students complete four maths, and the indicator of Math Course Rigor is the percentage of students who actually have successfully passed Math 3. The ACT is also an indicator. When we're looking at ACT, there are actually four subtests, and then a composite score. So, the ACT is measured by the percentage of students who meet that minimum composite score requirement for entrance into the UNC system of schools, and that minimum score is a score of 17. And then lastly, we have the Work Keys Assessment. The Work Keys Assessment is an assessment that our career and technical education concentrators take in grade 12, where they can actually earn credentials that they can take to businesses that show their readiness and their knowledge to enter the workforce. And then, again, the EL Progress. This, in high school, is only measured at grade 10. So, again, the percentage of grade 10 students who are meeting that target on their trajectory for acquiring the English language. So, similar to the elementary and middle school model, the performance is 80%, and again, the growth is 20%. And before I share some of the highlights of our data, I'd like to just say that 2018-19 was a unique school year in New Hanover County, as it was across eastern North Carolina, with the number of days and the impact we had from Hurricane Florence. And despite that, and I think through the resiliency, persistence of our staff, our students, our parents, our larger school community, we have a lot of good news to celebrate, and information to share, as we move into looking at some of the individual data points. One of the highlights, and one that I'm most excited to share, is our graduation rate has continued to climb in recent years, and is at its highest point to date, at 87.6%. And for the first time, we have surpassed the state's graduation rate. We are really proud of that, and we just really contribute that to the hard work of our high school counselors, our high school graduation coaches, student support staff, really keeping our students on track and checking with them. really keeping our students on track and checking with them and letting them know how close they are and working with them to meet that goal. Our data continues to support that we are outperforming the state in all of our end-of-course and end-of-grade assessment measures, as well as our college and career readiness assessments. And then lastly, we had a significant increase in our proficiency in our tested science areas: grade five science, grade eight science, as well as biology, with percent increases reaching about 7% increase in proficiency. So we'll just take a minute to look at some of the performance indicators. This slide actually just shows the comparison for the last several years between New Hanover County schools and the state. And again, this is just an indication that we are outperforming the state and many of our surrounding counties, and also, we are very competitive with the larger urban school districts in North Carolina. If we break down that performance and look specifically at our end-of-grade assessments, I would like to highlight the NC Math one and Math three data because we just talked about it being a standard-setting year. We often see in a standard-setting year that proficiency rates will drop. It's something that is anticipated. It's something that is experienced statewide. And while it looks like a big drop, it doesn't always have the negative connotations. Part of the standard-setting process is determining what is proficient. So what we often see is that the state will increase the expectations for proficiency, which is a welcome to change. I will share that in previous years, a student could get about 30% correct on an assessment and be considered proficient by state standards. And so when we have the standard-setting process, that expectation is raised. And so for math, now it's around 50% to be considered level three, which is the minimum proficiency in North Carolina. So while it appears that the scores in math have dropped, we do have to take into account that the expectations for proficiency have increased.
Dr. Murray, the Math one numbers do not include the large number of eighth graders who take Math one, correct?
That is correct. That is also a new piece to the accountability model and why, the addition of the NC Math three data. Many of our students take Math one in grade eight, and previously, our high schools were getting credit for those scores in their proficiency ratings. And with the new model, the state and federal government both have said that scores need to come from the school where the student had the learning experience. So the Math one scores for grade eight stay at the middle schools, and the NC Math one scores that you see reported here are truly our nine, 12 students. Our career and college readiness indicators, again, show that our students in New Hanover County are prepared for college and careers. The college readiness indicator test is the ACT, and we are happy to report that our performance and the percentage of students meeting that minimum entrance requirement for UNC system schools continues to increase. And also, yes?
What year do they take the ACT?
They take the ACT in grade 11. So North Carolina offers all grade 11 students the opportunity to take the ACT free of charge and to have that college reportable score. Just to kind of back up a little bit, because we're getting ready to experience this, 10th graders have the opportunity to take the pre-ACT, and that will actually happen on, I believe, it's November 6th.
North Carolina used to be predominantly SAT state, but then the state decided to pay for the ACT for every student. So it's now a required test for every student.
If they're gonna, if they plan to take it a second time, I'm assuming that would be out of pocket.
That would be. Yes. But what is unique about this system is the pre-ACT comes with excellent parent reports and data that gives a child and a parent indication as to whether they're on track to meet those minimum entrance requirements, and also suggestions on how to, what areas to focus on to increase those scores.
The state likes it as more of a subject area breakdown than the SAT, which was simply the reading and math portions.
ACT also incorporates the science piece, so that sometimes is a reason students choose to take the ACT over the SAT.
I did that.
The other piece of the college and career readiness is the career readiness piece. Again, that is the work keys. And our proficiency on work keys is also increasing, and just in the past several years, has surpassed the state. So we are focused on preparing students for a variety of career paths post-graduation. Our graduation data, if we take a look at the history, we have been anywhere from about three percentage points to as many as five percentage points below the state graduation rate, and we are excited this year to see that line bump up above the state graduation rate. So almost 88% of our students are graduating in four years or less, and that is a big Also, with the graduation rate, we'd like to just share some information about the improvements that some of our student groups have made in recent years. If we look back at the 2013-14 school year, we had a large discrepancy in the number of students who were graduating in the various student groups. Specifically, that lowest number is our English learner students. That was down around 28, 29% in 1314. And all of these student groups have progressed to a point in 2018-19 where that, while the gap does still exist, we are closing those gaps and graduating more of our students. We'll move now to the growth indicator. Growth in North Carolina is measured by EVOs, and again, it takes into account the rate at which students learn throughout the school year. It's reported in three categories: either the school meets the growth standard, it does not meet the growth standard, or it exceeds the growth standard. And what that really means is if a school exceeds the growth standard, those students are progressing at more than a year's worth of learning for being in school for a year. And again, it's that piece that's important because if we're trying to move our non-proficient students to proficiency, we need to have that at the state. Statewide, as well as in New Hanover County, we had about a quarter of our schools that did not meet the growth expectation. However, we had a higher percentage than the state of schools that met the growth expectation. And then the percentage of schools that met or exceeded the growth expectation is just under 75% of our schools. So we are glad to report that our students and our schools are growing.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
We keep talking about being above the state average, which is great because we're moving up, but that's what it is, it's average. Where are the biggest, I mean, what jurisdictions or LEOs would have the highest graduation rates and stuff like that? Because I'm glad we're above the state average, but we're still, we're average.
And we'll show you comparisons to the urban districts, neighboring districts, and similar-sized districts.
Yes. And specifically in our area, Sampson County is showing some gains in their graduation rate. Often, a lot of smaller districts have a higher percentage of graduates. If we go up the coast, Dare County has a very high percentage of graduates.
Beacon County City School has always had a high graduation rate.
Yes.
Some of it's a function of just being a small, small.
So the academic achievement and the growth measures come together to give us school performance grades. And in New Hanover County schools, we have a higher percentage of schools with a performance grade of A, B, or C compared to the schools that, in the state, that have performance grades of D and F. One important note about a school performance grade is it is a 15-point scale. We've been, that's been consistent for several years, and it did not change in the 1819 school year. So we do have a 15-point scale, and if we look, 87% of our schools are in the A to C school performance grade range. Often, we're interested in how we compare to our charter school friends, and this is just a graphic to show that if we take into account school performance grades, you'll note that the colored areas are the charter schools. None of our surrounding area charter schools received a school performance grade of A. So we have quite a few schools that are performing with growth and with academic achievement at higher rates than our charter schools in the area. And the last thing that I would like to share, actually, is not a part of the actual accountability model itself, but an important piece is the strides that we're making with our career and technical education program. We have district-wide proficiency on the CTE exams at over 81%. And we had, in New Hanover County schools in the 1819 year, over, almost 3,500 students earning industry credentials. Those are credentials they can take to an employer that signifies I have the knowledge, the skills, the ability to come right in and perform the job you needed. Often, results in higher wages, quicker employment, things like that. And then we had 377 national career readiness certificates earned, which is a part of our work keys assessment, but it is the job that our CTE teachers and students and the experiences that those students have that allows us to surpass that state average on the work keys assessment exam. And then lastly, we talked about SAT just a bit, just to highlight that New Hanover County school students, while it's not a requirement, we do get to see the average SAT scores. The national average SAT score is just around 1040. So all of our high schools are above the national average. The state average is about 1090, and most of our schools are there or almost there. And then our New Hanover County schools' average is just below 1130. So again, it's not part of our academic achievement accountability model, but another important piece to show that our students are career and college-ready and competitive across the state and nationwide.
This was last year's SAT?
1819. And this was seniors.
Sorry. What percentage of students do we have taking the SAT?
I will have to check on that. It varies from school to school. At some of our smaller early colleges, we have a higher percentage. I would say in, like, New Hanover High School, probably around 65%. Again, you know, that's a student's option, and a family pays for that opportunity.
Thank you.
The last part of the report is actually a booklet that you have that kind of details individual school data. I think you have that at your place, and I will be glad to answer any questions about the data at this time.
I've got the comparison data. I'll send it to you.
So how are we going to use this data to kind of plan going forward? I know that we did focus on the work keys assessment a few years ago, and that number obviously has gone up. What are we focusing on now?
Part of the focus now is math, and we have curriculum teams working on some curriculum models. I'll let Dr. Smith share the efforts that her team is doing.
Yes, so what we're looking at now is related specifically to adopting a district-wide curriculum, and I think I've spoken a little bit to this, probably much more so with principals, of course, in ensuring that all children have access to a high-quality curriculum, and then also the professional development to ensure that teachers have the understanding of that curriculum and the experience to deliver it regardless of who walks into that classroom. Because as you know, skills and abilities vary with children regardless of what course that they're enrolled in. And then working with principals and teachers to ensure that the things that we're asking children are of the highest quality and really those high cognitive demand types of tasks. So looking more toward enrichment and extension for a lot of our children. We're seeing in some of our schools where some of our highest-achieving learners are those students who aren't growing for us, and so making sure that we're emphasizing meeting the needs of those students, as well as ensuring that those students who may have historically underperformed are being challenged. And we're trying to challenge them with that high-quality curriculum, but then also making sure that teachers have the skill set to scaffold the instruction from wherever the student is to that, to that grade-level standard.
We also look at individual schools and where their growth numbers were and if there are areas that need to work on, and highlight some of the things that are doing well. For example, if you looked at Freeman's report card and just looked at the number, you wouldn't know that they actually have the highest growth factor for African-American students at the elementary level. But you look at some of our schools where that AIG population isn't meeting growth, and so we're looking at some of the things we're doing there as relates to rigor.
Anybody else have any questions? Lots of information. Thank you.
Yeah. Well-presented.
And that's not, that's just for information. All right. Item eight, superintendent's report.
I would just highlight one piece out of there. The 83% African-American graduation rate was the highest ever in the district, first time it's gone over 80%. And as Dr. Murray said, that's really a credit to the folks in the schools: principals, counselors, the teachers who are doing the work there. So thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay. Item nine, board chairperson's report. I don't have anything this month. Item 10, committee reports. Are there any committee reports for anyone?
Well, actually, I wanted to report about the, was the ACES committee? It's the Advisory Council for Special Education. They have dropped the term ACES because there's some confusion because that acronym's used in some other areas, and this way, this is very straightforward. Sorry. That it's, just going back to the original name, Advisory Council for Special Education. One of the things that they're going to be doing towards, well, in the middle of the year is they're right now planning to restuff the buses for supplies, so everybody can be aware of that. Probably after Christmas, they'll be restuffing the buses, right? And so donations are appreciated. Another thing that we started doing last spring, actually, was to bring more recognition, more recognition to EC teachers was to do a monthly special education teacher recognition for individual schools and the staff, not just their coworkers, but also, community members can recommend these different teachers, and they go through an application process. And I believe there's going to be four of them here next board meeting to introduce themselves. So that's another good thing that's been going on. And also, let's see here, if there's anything else. Now, that pretty well covers what we went over during the last meeting and some of the things in the spring. So anyway, thank you. Any questions about what we're doing? It's a great group, by the way.
I would like to share.
I would like to share some information about the Family Communications Committee. Um, we have, uh, we're now meeting, uh, bimonthly. And on the off-month, when we are not meeting, we are going to be having roundtable discussions. And the idea is to bring in our community to give us feedback on how the school system is communicating with parents, with families. So, our first roundtable discussion is actually going to be here in this building on October 23rd, uh, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the evening. Um, it is the theme for this roundtable discussion and these will change, um, bimonthly. The first theme is going to be new to New Hanover County Schools. If you are a recent kindergarten parent, if you are a recent middle school parent or family, or recent high school parent or family, we want to hear about that experience. What did your school do well? What do we need to look at? Were there gaps? Did the district communicate with you what you needed? Were you able to find the resources that you needed? Were you completely new to New Hanover County Schools, possibly transferring in from out of state or transferring in from out of district? Um, so, please, um, if you know anyone that is new to New Hanover County Schools, please encourage them to come out, October 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30 here at the BOE Center. Uh, we have a great panel of, uh, committee members that represent parents, teachers, principals, and we want to take this feedback and improve communication with our families. Um, so, thank you to all the committee members that are working and are planning to help facilitate those conversations.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, just a couple, uh, calendar committee updates. Uh, the New Hanover County Calendar Committee is seriously considering some pretty big changes, pretty important changes to our calendar. And we're considering making that proposal to the board in December. Uh, we have another meeting, but basically what this would do would be to move our calendars back closely aligned with the community code system. Students, uh, would be getting out in May, uh, week before Memorial Day, and they would be going back to school sometime in, we think, mid-August. Now, there's some flexibility associated with this. Uh, but what this would do would be allow our students to take their exams, uh, before going home for the Christmas break. It would allow us some flexibility in terms of where we place teacher workdays, uh, in terms of breaks. We might even be looking at adding some time to the Christmas holiday break, uh, really try to give people that time off that so many crave during that time of year. There are numerous benefits to the community in terms of allowing after-school care to reduce from having to work with, uh, a number of calendars right now. I believe we have nine calendars and bring our system down to two or three. Now, I know there was a lot of concern about what was going on with, um, with our choice year-round schools. And, uh, I do just want to reassure everybody that there are no plans for the next academic year to change those.
None of them.
We are looking at Sunset Park, um, but nothing would happen there without, uh, the input from those faculty, uh, and parents. Uh, it's a discussion that's sort of ongoing. There's some people who would like to change back and I've heard from a number of people via email who said, yeah, look, that might not be, uh, the best bet for us. Uh, I think that change, Dr. Markley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that happened over two years. Uh, that was a long process to get them from the traditional calendar to the year-round calendar.
Yeah. We looked at year-round calendars across the district probably four years ago and solicited feedback. Uh, we went, our three downtown schools went, uh, year-round Freeman, Snipes, Sunset Park, uh, after a, a parent input process and a, a faculty input process. Freeman and Snipes would, are restart schools, so they by law have flexibility with their calendars beyond, uh, our traditional set calendars. Sunset Park is not a restart school, so their calendar is one that's set by the board, not by the school, uh, school itself.
So, Dr. Markley, when Sunset, um, polled the staff as well as the parents, they had to have 80% consent. And they did, so they went to year-round. Will they have to have 80% to go back to traditional?
Uh, leave that to the calendar committee for their, their input on that.
I think the next steps for the committee would be to sample it, see what's out there in terms of support. I will say that Sunset's made progress.
Mm-hmm.
Substantial progress. And, you know, I, I personally am hesitant to change that, you know, within a six or seven-week timeframe. Um, I know I've talked to a lot of faculty member there. They are interested in perhaps looking at aligning themselves with, with Freeman just so we can reduce the number of different calendars, but maintaining some sort of year-round school. That could be an option. Uh, but we're very early in that process and in that discussion on the committee. For the, any, any questions on calendar, I'm happy to answer them. Uh, for the dress code committee, we had our first meeting. We have a lot of, uh, different groups represented in that committee. We will be adding a middle school student and, uh, two middle school students, uh, in the next, uh, meeting. I think that's an important voice, uh, as you heard from Trask. This is an issue that, in some ways, it affects those middle school students, uh, not more, but just differently. So, we really need to bring that piece into our conversation. But, uh, this is a deep dive into a complex issue. We certainly welcome and solicit any and all community feedback. Please, uh, tell us what you hear. Tell us what, you know, our students are saying. Tell us what our parents and faculty are saying. We, we want to hear it. We need to hear it. So, uh, Member Justice, if you have anything to add and...
Yeah. Well, it was a really good first meeting and one of the things that was, oh, sorry. One of the things that was really, uh, important to me was to see how everybody was able to express themselves honestly and comfortably, and the students really had good perspectives. Uh, uh, as we go through this, we're going to have, uh, I, I think it's going to be a good process. It's going to come up with a good result.
Is the survey still live?
You can still go online.
You can still go online and still complete.
Right. There was some, I, I have had some, um, suggestions about the survey that, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm getting over a cold, uh, that, um, one of the, the policy that's online has still got those red marks through them. If, uh, the people in public have asked me if we could take those out because it's confusing them. They're not sure if that means that they've already taken them out, they haven't. So, if we could just clean it up to the original policy, so they can not be confused if they're not sure what the red lines are about. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Brief update on the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah. It is, uh, rather a mouthful. We can maybe abbreviate EDI Committee, which I've seen online before. Uh, we, the application for community members to apply is open, uh, and it, the link is available on our website. So, for the community members that are interested, please apply. Um, and our first meeting, we're looking at the 15th. Is that correct?
Yes. We just have to set a time and a location. And I believe we have at least seven applications already.
Okay. That's great. All right. So, that information will be forthcoming. Anything else to add?
It's a tight turnaround time. The applications will close on the 10th, correct? October 10th?
Yes. Okay. All right. Any other committee reports? Item 11, consensus items. Item A, Personnel Appendix F. Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you. Item 12, Old Business. Item A, 2019, 20 calendars. Appendix H, Dr. Smith.
Yes. Um, last month, I shared with the board, um, the, um, anticipated recommendation for make-up days for the, um, days missed as a result of, of Dorian. And, um, since then, we've gotten a lot of feedback. And I just want to say publicly that I very much appreciate the feedback that we have received. And we did take that into consideration, um, as a part of our senior leadership discussion. Um, and we are making this recommendation based on that feedback that we received. Um, and, um, I'm sure if you had the opportunity to read all of the feedback, I don't know if it all came directly to you as well, but, um, you know, s- some of the feedback said to do one thing and then the other feedback said to do the complete opposite of that. So, um, we, I think, to the best of our ability, have tried to find kind of middle-of-the-road in that. And, um, I think the original proposal did not offer an opportunity for teachers to make up the workdays. It was an option where the annual leave was going to be charged to teachers. Um, and what we're presenting tonight would provide them with an option at the end of the, the school year. I won't say traditional year since we have nine different calendars, but at the end of every school year calendar except for restart and the restart year-round calendar because they're actually using their intercession days, um, that there would be the opportunity for teachers to make up those days if they so chose. Now, if teachers did not want to make them up, because I heard that feedback as well, then they would be able to be charged annual leave. So, that flexibility is, is available to teachers. Um, and what I'll do is just go through each of the calendars and each of the dates. And then, of course, if you have any questions, please ask. So, the first calendar would be traditional. And for traditional, the recommendation is that January 2nd and 3rd become student days. And then, teachers would be given the opportunity, if they did not want to take annual leave, on the days that we had already missed, June 17th and would, 18th would be, be those days that teachers could make those, that time up. Um, the next calendar is the pre-K calendar. It would follow the traditional calendar. Um, following that, we have the restart calendar. And as I shared before, their make-up days were on September 30th and October 1st. Um, there would not be the need for teachers to make up any time because those days were originally intercession days. Um, and so, teachers have already made that up. So, they were not charged annual leave. Teachers that worked the 30th and the 1st, um, uh, made those student days up. The next calendar would be the Freeman year-round. It would follow the same as the, um, restart calendar. The next calendar is the year-round calendar. Um, December 13th, if you'll scroll down just a little bit, would become a full student day. And the 16th would be the half-day. Originally, the 13th was the half-day, so, um, now the 16th would, would be that half-day. And then, if you'll scroll back up to the top of that calendar, and January 6th would become a student day. Originally, it was a teacher workday, um, to make that time up. The next calendar is Lake Forest Academy. Just as a reminder, these teachers and students receive 15 additional days of employment for teachers, instruction for students, and so, they're losing two of those. So, teachers, um, uh, would, um, end up taking annual leave for those days because there's not an option to make those days up on the Lake Forest calendar. Then for WACs, WACs, the, um, student days would become, um, October 4th and December 20th. And then, for teachers, the opportunity to make up those days would be May 28th and 29th. And then, for CTEC, oh, excuse me, Isaac Bear, it would be, um, November 1st and December 19th for the student days. And then, those make-up days would be May 27th and the 28th. And then, I think we have one more. Yep, there's CTEC. And then, CTEC would be December 16th and 17th for student days. And then, the make-up days would be May 28th and 29th.
How many, um, I guess you'd say called "snow days" were built into the yearly calendar?
So, when the, the calendar laws changed, um, really eliminated the opportunity for snow days to be built in per se. Um, what we typically do is we utilize teacher workdays. But because of the traditional calendar and how it falls, um, most years, we've been very limited in being able to, to strategically insert teacher workdays throughout the year, which can then be used as snow days. So...
So, in other words, there's no real snow day that, as they called it, left?
No.
Okay.
Not, not really.
Yeah.
I will say that the calendar that we're looking at for the following year does build in an intercession period around January that would give us some flexibility to have what we could consider s- snow days. So, those are days when teachers aren't scheduled to work, that we could build in on the, on that front end, um, or rather, the back end of the, the semester, um, to make up days if we needed to. Um, and then also, in terms of making up days, we are required either to have 185 school days or 1,050 hours. And part of the reason why we, um, work so diligently to make up the days now is because we don't know what, um, will occur in the months of January and February and even March, I would even offer to you. Um, and so, we don't want to find ourselves where we're eliminating days at spring break, which we know that people plan way in advance for, or find ourselves even saying, you know, the S-word, Saturday school, um, which I think I probably would forget to wake up that day and come myself. Um, so, we try to make up days if we can on the front end of the calendar when we lose them, so that if we do have inclement weather on the back end, then it's less inconvenient, it's less taxing to families, um, because they have planned so far in advance.
We were out three days, uh, and so, we're on, right now, we're just scheduling to make up two of the three.
Any other questions? I appreciate you all. I know that everyone appreciates and the teachers will appreciate you adding back that option, because that's a lot of what we heard.
Yes.
Was about the eating up the two days of leave when they didn't have a choice. All right. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve Appendix H.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Item B, Budget Resolution, Appendix I. Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. Um, tonight, I'm presenting very belatedly to you the, the budget resolution for the 1920 year. We, we waited as long as we could for a state budget and decided at this point, um, this resolution totals just over $290,000 for all funds. And, um, the state numbers and federal, well, federal, we had planning allowance for those grants, but state is still based on estimates, somewhat updated from our original estimates because the legislature did approve new benefit rates. So, those, those are built into this. It also includes the, um, salary and, and benefit increases based on the conference budget, which is, you know, our best estimate at this point to what may be approved in the state, as well as our, um, local pay scales for non-certified employees that we, that are the next agenda item. So, all of that is, um, those numbers are represented in this proposed budget. Um, I think there is, um...
There's still a lot in this budget that is pending state approval.
Yes.
So, you, you see things like average teacher raise and things like that. Unless the state actually passes a budget, you won't see those.
Going through.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that this, the county approval, um, did include a 3.4% operating increase that I just wanted to point out.
So, we will implement everything that we can and then hold on everything that is waiting state approval?
Correct.
Okay.
It's even more fun when we get to the next item.
All right. Any questions on Appendix I? Are you here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item C, Local Salary Schedules, Appendix L. Ms. Small.
Thank you. As I just, um, mentioned, we are recommending salary schedule approval because we are still hopeful there'll be a state budget. And as soon as it is, we, um, if it happens in the next few days, which is unlikely, but if it did happen, we would be able to implement these, um, pay scales effective October. Um, we do anticipate whenever it is approved, um, that, um, everything would be retroactive to July 1st. Um, there is a possibility that it won't be approved at all, that we will, um, operate this entire year with the state continuation budget, um, because they have been approving some mini budgets, which, you know, cert- for example, the, the, um, benefit rate. So, um...
So, um, we will continue operating under the state continuing resolution, a- as well as, um, you know, our, our local budget that, that you just agreed to, but no pay raises or step increases, um, for teachers, um, or any employees will be implemented until the state budget is approved. With that, I recommend your approval.
This is, this is the same as the last though.
I would reiterate, we're, you're approving salary schedules that will not go into effect until there is a state budget.
And the main reason we have to do that is even though they're local schedules, there, many of these employees are state-paid and the, the state, um, continuing budget resolution does not allow increases for state-paid employees. And so, we have state, local, and federally-paid employees all on the same salary schedule. So, that's kind of, you know, why we're, we're stuck there. I, I will point out that the, the local proposals did include many things that we were excited about included, including increasing that minimum wage for non-certified to thirteen dollars per hour, um, and then getting the minimum wage for bus drivers to fourteen per hour and then for the part-time child nutrition staff to twelve dollars per hour. So, those are significant increases that are reflected in this. We just can't implement them until we have a state budget.
And, and this is, this is all, this is all within, all the work you've already done in the, it's set now that you're using. Because I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm very concerned about the bus driver situation and I know that the discussion hasn't been had yet about it, but I don't really think the fourteen dollars an hour is going to get us hiring any more bus drivers. I know it's, haven't been discussed yet, but that bothers me pretty close.
Average for bus drivers, you know, is a little bit higher with three-point-three percent, but it's, you know, still, it's still an issue trying to recruit drivers, so we, we agree.
I'm very concerned about that.
Um, but even if we, you know, if, even if you wanted to go higher, um, because they're all state-paid, we can't do anything at this point.
We can add supplements.
We could.
That's what I'm talking about.
It would take a, a new, you know, pay schedule, but that, that would be an option.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve appendix L, local salary schedules.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, all opposed.
All right, so six to one. Item thirteen, new business, item A, budget amendments, appendix J, uh, Ms. Small.
So, now that we have a budget, we're asking for, to amend it, um, to include, the majority of this is for carryover, both the operating budget carryover, um, for continuing project and maintenance and some carryover POs, that, that type of situation, as well as a, um, new donation we received from the Wright School Beach Foundation, um, for capital, all the continuing projects and capital outlay are rolling over as well.
Is there a motion to approve appendix J?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item B, surplus, appendix K, Ms. Small.
Thank you. Um, tonight, a request of board's approval to, um, dispose of surplus property no longer necessary or desirable for public school purposes, to be disposed of in accordance with public school law. Um, upon board approval, we have a preliminary scheduled, um, auction to be held on October nineteenth at ten a.m.
Is there a motion to approve appendix K?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's a long list. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Small. Item C, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, low performing school plans, appendix M, Dr. Smith.
Yes, and my apologies, this inf- this actually is an item just for information. I will be bringing back to you next month the plans for approval. Um, the North Carolina low-performing schools are required to utilize the NC Star student system, excuse me, as their tool for school improvement planning and the plans that you have attached are those plans for those schools within our district that are identified as low-performing schools. So, that is Williston, Forest Hills, Snipes Academy of Arts and Design, Rachel Freeman, um, School of Engineering, and then Wrightsboro Elementary School. Um, as, and as a part of their plan, um, they are required to assess of what they're called, um, twelve key indicators of success and then prioritize within their plans three to five of those indicators and then create action items for those. And so, that is, um, what's present in, in, in the plans that are before you. And what I would ask is, um, if, if you have questions, we're very willing to answer those questions. Um, um, and, um, as you can see, the goals are listed for each of those schools and, um, very detailed, um, plans as to, um, their actions. Um, Snipes Plan probably is the, um, is, is the most detailed just simply because they've been engaged in this work far longer than any of the other schools within the, the district. Um, and what I'll do next month is, once you've had a chance to review, we'll actually post these for public review, public comment, um, we'll review that, share that information with the principals and then we'll actually bring this back to the board for approval for, for next month. And then, once that's done, then we'll share that information with the State Board of Education.
Do you get feedback from the State Board on these plans?
I'm sorry?
Do you get feedback from the State Board on these plans?
We receive the feedback from the Department of Public Instruction, um, and so, they will review the plans and if there are areas where they feel that we're lacking or we need additional details, then they'll give us that feedback. And then that will be shared with the schools and the school teams.
Okay, thank you.
So, this will be new business next week again?
Yes, I apologize for that.
All right, thank you. Item fourteen, correspondence, is there any correspondence anyone would like to share?
Of correspondence, uh, so much as I had an item, um, Member Adams and I have been discussing some ideas about, uh, improving, uh, the transition for students, uh, after our redistricting process is over. It's kind of where the work begins for a lot of those families and students, so I'll let Ms. Adams address, you know, some of the ideas that we have or that she had.
I think a lot of the redistricting issues come from fear of not knowing what you're going to. Uh, but the bottom line is that our New Hanover County schools are all phenomenal in their own ways and they all have things that make them special. And, um, if ultimately a family is redistricted, we want them to be as comfortable as possible with, with that decision, um, even though it may be painful. And, um, so, if schools, I think it'd be really prudent for all of the schools that are part of the redistricting process to start planning a welcoming activity, meaning open houses for, for the families to come, meet the teachers, coming up with mentor programs, buddy programs within the schools, something that's going to make the students that are being redistricted into new buildings feel like they're part of the family. And, um, you know, I just think that it's just a conversation that needs to be had. Um, each school could do it a little bit differently. That represents their community, but also respects that they may be welcoming new students. Um, so, I just think that it's something that should be discussed and I think that every school has a different culture that they would want to share and, um, you know, this is a difficult process for everybody and whatever we can do to make it easier, I think that we should try and do that.
And actually, that's one of the things have, I know, sorry, about the cold again. I have been in other districts when they redistricted, in fact, this district when they redistricted in the nineties and they did do similar programs like that. So, have we done anything like that in the past or are there, are there any plans in place that, once the redistricting is complete, to have these types of school activities within the new, new communities, welcoming people in? Is anything like that? Well, I'm just asking any of you over, probably Dr. Smith, because you would probably be the person that would be.
Well, I don't know that we've done anything, um, specific. Um, I, if I have to recall, um, I think this is probably the largest redistricting that we've done in a very, very long time. Um, but I do believe that our principals would welcome the opportunity and, um, I know that when we transitioned, um, Forest Hills immersion program to Gregory, there were very specific intentional types of activities that occurred through the summer and through the school year to build that sense of community with those families that were coming to that school. Um, and, um, I think that adds, that added to the success of that transition with, with, with those folks. So, um, we surely could initiate that conversation, um, but I, I am absolutely sure that would be something that pick, that our, our principals and our PTAs would very much, um, welcome.
Great idea.
Any other correspondence? All right, announcements. Item A, Calendar Committee Meeting, Thursday, October third, two thousand nineteen, at four P.M. in the Board of Ed Center. Item B, College Park Grand Opening, is this, is?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, October eleventh, two thousand nineteen, at ten a.m. at College Park. Uh, item C, Redistricting Committee Meeting is Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at three-thirty P.M. here in the Board of Ed Center. There is going to be another Calendar Committee Meeting, Thursday, October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at four P.M. in the Board of Ed Center. I'd say that's the busiest the Calendar Committee has ever been in the history of the Calendar Committee.
That's good.
Item E, Title IX Meeting is Monday, October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, at three-thirty P.M. in the Board of Ed Center and, uh, I'm sure we'll, we will be broadcasting that again. Item F, Family Communications Committee Meeting, Round Table Discussion, Wednesday, October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, at six P.M. in the boardroom at the Board of Ed Center. Item G, Dress Code Committee is Wednesday, October twenty-third, at six P.M. here in the Board of Ed Center in the small conference room. And finally, the next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education will be held Tuesday, November fifth, at five-thirty P.M. in the Board of Ed Center, right here. Uh, item sixteen, uh, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wayne.
Statute is one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, subsection A six.
Move for closed session?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.